Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Town of Wheatfield Town Board Meeting for June twenty of nineteen sixteen. We're starting this evening with a public hearing on a proposed new law. This would be a public hearing discussing the Airport Overlay District. The Task Force under Richard Muscatello, the many members of the Task Force have been working on this for some time, as has Drew Riley as consultant. And I'll turn it over to you two gentlemen, Drew and Richard, to lead the discussion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Does anybody need a copy? I handed out copies. If anybody needs a copy, please let me know. You should have the law, proposed law includes what's gonna go in the zoning code, which is the overlay district language. And then we'll be amending the map to match that overlay district language. First of all, the purpose of this law is, and Richard can get into NIMAC and the purposes of NIMAC, but we're trying to protect the airport in layman's terms. What we're doing is codifying existing rules that already are in place. Right now, if you were to put up a large structure anywhere near the airport, you're required to notify FAA and FAA provides comments. And then the Planning Board deals with projects that are around the airport and they typically put restrictions on those, on projects going in and around the airport. We're just taking all those things and putting them in the law, so no one forgets about them and that they know they're on the books. Those things are, first of all, height, which you always have to do. If you're within a certain area, within the, within the, near the airport, you have to notify FAA and they have to comment on that, you know, because it could impact their, what they call runway protection areas or zones. They also can be concerned about issues like glare and radio operations and ponds and things like that. So again, we're putting this in a code, actually identifying on the map. And the first question I always get is, well, how did you come up with this area on the map? Because it's kind of odd looking, the area that's on this proposed map. Well, we didn't make it up. We actually got the, what they call the FAR map from the airport, which basically shows those airport protection areas and the approach areas, et cetera. So we followed those lines and put them on the zoning map. Once this law goes into place, then if you're in the, in one area of it, you have to do a screening tool to see if you have any impact. It's a little further away from the airport. But if you're in the closer up area, which we call on the zoning map, the airport protection area, you actually have to do the notification process, get comments from FAA. The Planning Board will get those comments and then make any conditions on the approval. This is not about stopping projects. There's no restrictions on uses. It's basically making those projects better and more compatible with the airport. That is the purpose of the law. Richard, I don't know if there's anything you want to say on NIMAC's behalf or the Task Force's behalf.
On behalf of NIMAC, NIMAC is a organization that is working hard to preserve the activity at the bank called the rezoning. And we accept that these are part of the order, and it's also very important to reduce any parts of the area. We have airports, which we have, to lose eighty million dollars in areas, and a hundred forty seven million dollars in purchase service. It's a huge economic value to reduce the line business, fall business through the forward to, to the state, to the city. Also, which is important to this law, because airports are very interesting. That originally we minimized many encroachments to the situation, and the fact the air operations are significantly important to the airport. To the extent that it's a challenge, because of the national device. And every good site, we identify the encroachments, is there for your planning and future. But if you're through the day, to the end, the government, by the Congress and the local authorities, they're going to replace. Basically, that, 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 you know, the, the importance is that if there's something going through, they can call us out and they can take it and throw it down. things, they call it, uh, 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 they look at, uh, 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 new aircraft, uh, 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 basically, uh, uh, I think John Cooper, the, uh, chairman of the, uh, uh, NYMAC, uh, John, and, so working many, many years, uh, before he raised his, uh, once, nineteen ninety years.
I'm sorry.
Uh, 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 now I think of the, uh, questions, um...
I just wanna make one important statement, 'cause there's another question I thought that people asked me, well, why are we doing this? Why doesn't FAA do about, do this? New York State, home rule state, you control, town controls land use. FAA could have a big problem with a project going in and they have no regulatory power over land use. The only thing they could do is, they can, they sometimes purchase lands that join a new airport, but we're talking about lands that are further away. So they have no regulatory power, they count on you, they give comments to you, the, the local municipalities who have land use decisions, to make these projects better. And as Richard says, we need to make the projects better because if we have problems in the future, it reduces the, the problems with scoring and this, this base could, in the future, be closed because of those problems that we've created with our local land use issues. This is the first step, we're gonna be looking at other things we can do, we think this is a baby step, but a very important step to look at these things that, that could impact the airport. With that supervisor, I'll turn it back over to you for any questions or comments.
Uh, let me ask a question first, I suppose.
Yep.
Restated, we are not adding anything, we're not changing anybody's property, we're not changing anybody's rules.
Right.
What we're doing is codifying in town law.
Right.
Those rules that are already in place in federal and, and to some, to a lesser extent, state law.
These, these things we sometimes forget about, uh, we sometimes, uh, the applicants say, where, where is this stuff written in? We have to re- confirm FAA, we're gonna fall, put it in one place, 'cause it all exists. Those rules and regulations exist that we're talking about, we're putting them all in one place, and you control those under site plan approval, so you know that you won't miss these things, and that we'll make sure that we're taking care of them.
Okay. Jerry, had you any of that?
Uh, I have a question, the Buffalo Airport, um, the city regulations, the Buffalo Airport, applies to, to, uh, uh...
Um, well, I can't speak for the Buffalo Airport, but we looked at other air bases within Stewart Airport.
Do they have, do they have commercial?
That's commercial and...
And the air force.
It applies to, it's to protect the airport in general, and it doesn't, you know, specifically apply to just the airbase, but it also v- applies to the airport. You're right, there's commercial air traffic out of there, run by the NFPA, and then there's the, the airbase, which is run by the airport.
So, uh, do you, do you, uh, do you, uh, do you, uh...
I don't think it's either one, I think it was pointed out to us by the air force and the airbase with the BRAC commission, we're just taking those laws and making it apply to the airport in general. We're not saying one or the other, it's the airport itself, which is...
Do you, do you, uh, other parts of the, uh, uh...
We, they've been in part of the meetings, they think it's a great idea, NFPA attended all the meetings.
Why, please, for, uh, uh, uh...
Yeah. No, no, we're talking about, he asked about the NFPA, the owners of the...
Uh, 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 uh...
Right.
Uh, 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 uh...
Yep.
Uh, why does, uh, 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 uh...
That, that's why we have this public hearing, we have to develop a law first and then have a public hearing.
Well, I know, I can, uh, 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 uh...
Well...
Uh, uh, uh...
Very good question. For, for laws that we change that affect people in a way that changes what they can do with their land, we do that, we have public information meetings on the Niagara Falls Bill of Overlay. This is just taking existing regulations and putting them in one place. So, it doesn't affect your property at all, it's just taking existing regulations and...
Um, uh, 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 uh...
Yep.
Uh, uh, uh...
If you were proposing a commercial project before the planning board, that's the only power we have, you go to the building department, it'll have anything you do, you can do anything you want on your own property. It says site plan application, something that appears before the planning board, they have the power to do. So if you had a project that had to go to the planning board, the planning board would have comments. Single family homes do not go to the planning board. If you have a commercial business, you would have to go to the planning board if you're building something new, or industrial in that area. Good question, though, I mean, it's, it's, some zoning laws are, are difficult to deal with.
Uh, 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 uh...
If, right?
Uh, 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 uh...
Right? And we're trying to prevent that from happening in the future. Matter of fact, we've been good about, and I can't speak for, the planning board's been good about, one of the things they don't want is ponds, so all the projects that have been approved in the industrial park have no ponds, so they don't want the grease landing there and, and bothering them. They've been very good about looking at certain things, but we wanna make sure that we don't miss stuff like glare, like putting solar panels on, on the roof. Now, I'd say you can't do it, but you have to do it in a certain way that you're not affecting the airbase operations. Okay? No, good question.
Uh, 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 uh...
It would, it would be unfair to say that the air force is dictating, that would probably not be proper terminology. It's just, it has been made very clear to us in NYMAC that encroachment is a major issue, uh, and if there is another BRAC in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen, or any time that Congress decides to have one, that's one of the major things that they would look at. So we are looking into ways of protecting those areas so that we would be safe from a BRAC.
If there were no airbase there, we would still have these rules and regulations, those rules and regulations still exist. If you propose any structure over a certain height near an airport, whether it's a cell tower, whether it's anything, it doesn't matter whether it's an airbase or a commercial airport, you still have to do those notifications and requirements, and if you require site plan approval, approval before the planning board, the planning board will consider all those things that are in that law, whether it's an airbase or a commercial airport.
We have, uh, 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 uh...
What the law, what this law states is they would have to run that through FAA to make sure that they meet FAA rules, which it already has to, it just puts it into our law that they have to meet FAA rules, and our planning board can dictate that into account.
If it's a project that needs planning board approval, we're either didn't, if, if you're a contractor building a structure and you, you're using a crane that's over a hundred feet in height, without this law in the book, you have to go to FAA and get approval for those cranes, called to any contractor. Um, but understand that this is, this is, we're codifying existing rules, if a farmer needs site plan approval to put up a wind turbine or some other thing, we will consider this, we consider this in our approval.
Uh, 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 uh...
Uh, read the law, the law identifies that one is a, and I'll give you, and, and you can publish this map, this is the map, uh, FAA, they, uh, these are the type of areas around an airport, you know, even if they pick those lines and put those lines on the map. So one area is a direct, it impacts the direct runway, so the airport protection area is right at the end of the runway, very important to protect right at the end of the runway. So the airport protection areas follow the runways, and then it continues out in a conical surface all the way around the airport, because airplanes can come in at an angle and then go in there, so that's how that, those lines were generated. And then, once you get out past those lines on this drawing, the airport, the airbase and FAA are still concerned, which are typically talking about structures that are three hundred feet in height, so we will know if there's three hundred foot structures proposed in this town. We're trying to deal with structures that are sixty, seventy feet tall, are typically ones that have come to play.
Is this, uh, 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 uh...
Yep. Now, it goes both ways, both ways. The FAR map is by FAA.
Uh, 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 uh...
It's a map for, for taking off and landing.
Elevations?
Yep.
Is this about elevation?
Yeah, all about elevation.
Uh, 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 uh...
Pardon?
Uh, 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 uh...
Um, because part of the rules are, if you notice, if you're putting in a thirty foot structure in one of those areas, you're still supposed to notify FAA, and FAA will have comments on all the things that we put in our law. They will have comments on lighting, they will have comments on ponds, they will have comments on, on electrical equipment. We've codified that so people know ahead of time that these are the things that FAA are gonna comment on. That's why we put it in the law, so they need to know it.
Uh, 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 uh...
Zoning laws are for people who develop. If you're a, a, a property owner within there on a residential house, this law will have no impact on you. If it's for someone who's developing, the developer needs to know, these are the rules and regulations within the town.
So what does, uh, 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 uh...
Right? Doesn't require planning board approval.
Uh, 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 uh...
Yes, it would. And we're...
Nope.
We're writing a law right now on solar panels, we're researching that, through the public hearing, information on that, we're looking at solar panel installations right now.
Uh, 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 uh...
You need a building permit.
I do, I don't need a, uh, 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 uh...
Yeah, but you need a building permit.
That's true.
Yep, and we're writing a, we're writing a law to address solar panels on roofs. Matter of fact, the law, right now, if people are here, the solar panel law will say, if you're putting one on a roof, we're not changing it, you're still gonna need a building permit, but we're using the state's building permit application that talks about non-reflective materials, which most solar panels should have, non-reflective materials. Then we don't care, the building permit, building defect, you will issue your permit to put your solar panel on your roof. There you go.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I'm, uh, 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 uh...
Because we're not restricting use. If we restricted use, you'd have to compensate, compensate those people who took the property. These are regulations that already exist, they already regulate height, FAA regulates height and tells the planning board that you need to do this and this about height. They al- already regulate these other things about, if you're in that one way protection area, they're gonna comment on, if you put a big antenna broadcasting signals, FAA is gonna have a big problem with that, and they want the town to enforce that issue. It's not an issue of taking away your rights and what to do with the land, it's adding regulations that already exist, that this is how you regulate that property. So if you're someone building a commercial business in that area, and you're proposing to do something, this law will point out to you on the book, these are the things you have to consider when you're building in these areas of the town. Not taking away anybody's right to develop their property. Matter of fact, we didn't touch the issue of use, no use is changed, the underlying zoning stays the same, you're allowed to do all those things, if you wanna do agricultural uses, business uses, in the appropriate district, you can do those uses. Yep.
Laurie, I can't hear you.
Whoops, want you?
Nobody else can.
Hi.
That's Laurie's question. Back in the early part of your comments, you made a comment about the town can overrule or have the power, even over the FAA, they have control?
They, they do not have the power over the FAA, FAA will do the comment, if they don't, the FAA can, can go then and say, hey, we had a, we had a mission with Stewart Airport, where the planning board there approved a, uh, automobile, uh, and for a huge sign out, now, uh, and FAA, uh, 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 why didn't you contact, uh, 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 uh,